We'd like to call this meeting to order. Just looking at this for the first time, paying attention, we didn't get a prayer today. Invocation?
No.
I'll volunteer if you need to volunteer.
Pardon?
I'll volunteer if you need to volunteer.
We have one here.
But he's not on my agenda.
Who is? From the Berean Baptist Church. Your name?
Caleb Rivera.
Caleb. Apologize for not having this down here. Yeah, you know, you like to call a person up by their name, and so I apologize for that. Anyway, our invocation is by Caleb. Pledge of Allegiance, I don't have that on here either.
I'll leave that if you want.
Okay, Gage will give the leaves and the pledge, and I'll do the thought of the day. Caleb, please, right up here at the podium. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given to us, another day to live and work. We ask that you bless in the proceedings of today in the county commission, that you'd be with our commissioners and all of our elected officials, that you'd give them wisdom as they make judgments and as they govern over our county. We pray, God, that you'd allow them to be good stewards of the money that is pointed to them by our taxes. We ask that you would help them to govern in the fear of God, as well as of the people that have elected them. We ask that you'd bless in the proceedings and that everything that would be done here would be honoring and glorifying to you. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. So Caleb, before you leave, could you tell me where is your church located at?
We're on Jackson Avenue, 3846, right across from the Grandview Park.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming in today.
Thank you. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, it's good to have you all here today. My thought of the day, I want to talk a little bit about the Marty and Jennifer and what they do for us.
What department are you called?
Culture Parks and Recreation.
Culture Parks and Recreation, I'm sorry. You know, this last weekend, they had 11 events, they were telling us about, on Friday and Saturday. So when you look at all the different, Gold Spike Arena, Ogden Echols, the ice sheet up there, they had 11 events going in two days. Well, that's all hands on deck to do that. I'm just amazed at how busy they all are and how they spend so much time putting these, making these venues so the county's not losing money on them. And we don't lose money on them. They're very successful venues and very, very happy with what Culture Parks and Recreation does. And I just want to give them an atta boy because it was fun to be in the middle of it. I was up dropping the puck at the ice sheet, and it was fun to watch everybody going 100 miles an hour. It's an amazing thing. And Marty and Jennifer and Todd, you guys do a great, great, great job in the county, and I want to thank you. So that's my thought of the day. Travis Campbell, where are you at? Rob Bishop's office.
Yeah.
Good to have you here today. Would you like to say anything while we're getting going here, or are you just visiting today?
I was just visiting, but I guess I could.
Only if you want to.
If you want to.
Is there something you'd like to address us with?
Nothing specific, but I can.
Okay, sure, come on up here.
Commissioners, if I may? Travis also, he's got a wonderful singing voice. I don't know if he'll share that with us today, but he's a great, he's really good at singing.
You do not want to hear my singing voice. Yeah, I, good morning, Travis Campbell, I work for Congressman Rob Bishop. Just wanted to stop by, I haven't been here for a little bit, and just wanted to stop by and see what's happening in Weber County. So, I mean, I can give you a quick update on what my boss is kind of working on right now.
Sure.
A month and a half ago or so, we passed a public lands package that we, our office had been working on for years, and so that was a big win, I'm sure you heard about that. A lot of, about 10 different items affecting Utah. This was a bill that had components all over the country, but about 10, 10 smaller pieces of legislation specific to Utah. So now that has passed, Congressman Bishop's kind of working with the administration to get those management plans implemented. So that's something that's keeping him busy right now. Also, as a member of the Armed Services Committee, the NDAA is in talks right now. That bill for this year is happening at the moment, so he's working hard on that. He's one of the senior members of that committee. So, working hard on that and, you know, making sure Hill Air Force Base is still viable and a big part of the country's defense. I guess timely, the timeliness of the Golden Spike, he's going to be in town for a lot of that, those celebrations in a couple of weeks. He'll be in town next week as well. But he, I'm sure you're aware, he had a piece of legislation to redesignate the, I'm trying to remember what the exact term was, but the Golden Spike National Historic Site, it's now the Golden Spike National Historic Park. So with that new designation comes more recognition and a few more opportunities. That bill, which was part of the package that I had mentioned, creates not only that new name, but it creates a new network of systems around the country that relate to the transcontinental railroad. So he's going to be in town for those big celebrations, which I think are going to be a lot of fun, so. Kind of at the moment, that's what he's working on, and he's happy to answer any questions or get any thoughts or messages back to him.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, Travis, but I can tell you from me, you're in the audience frequently, and we appreciate you representing the congressman's, you know, here when you come to our meetings, and we appreciate that. It often goes unsaid, but it doesn't go unnoticed.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to be here, so.
Travis, you give the congressman our best wishes. We appreciate what he does for Weber County and the state, but also make sure that he has his hat ready to go, his official hat for the celebration. We wouldn't want him to spill out of place when he comes here.
I'm going to make sure he's got one.
Yeah, he'd feel bad if he saw the rest of us in hats and he didn't have one.
You know what? We'll do. Anisa, will you please raise your hand? If you just see this gal right back here, Travis, she can, we've got four different varieties of hats that are handcrafted, and they're not cheap hats, they're really nice hats that have the Spike 150 in them, and that's where you go to get those hats, right there.
We'll have to try and get him one.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate you being here today.
Of course.
All right, public comments today. If there's anybody who's come to address the commission, please step forward, and now's your time. I don't see anybody interested, so we'll go from there. All right. We have some presentations to be made today. Well, the first one is presentation of the county government theme, Connecting the Unconnected. Commissioner Forre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Connecting the Unconnected actually is a national, excuse me, Association of Counties program, and to no surprise, Weber County is already leading the charge on connecting the unconnected. And let me just explain a little bit what it does. Connecting the Unconnected really explores ways that counties can connect residents, all our residents, to service in the spirit of building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. Continuing our goals to serve the underserved, connecting the most vulnerable citizens to services that help forge pathways to self-sufficiency. This would include the homeless and those out there among our communities that are underserved at that time. So to that end, Weber County's taken on specific goals and visions and strives to promote health, services, administrative justice, and keep Weber County safe, foster economic opportunities, and a lot more. You'll see some programs over the next month to two months that you'll see us bringing together many of the nonprofits and avoid duplication of services in this direct vision to connect these underserved people with the nonprofits, as well as the services provided by the county, to make sure that these services are public, that they're out there in arenas that are accessible by all the people, the many services that we do offer. Weber County, I can tell you, takes pride in our responsibility. The commissioners, I can tell you, take direct pride and responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents, which is our charge by the Constitution. And we do that in an efficient and cost-effective ways, to make sure our taxpayers come first at the same time that we're providing those services to the most vulnerable. We aim, as we've always said, to be people-centered, those people-centered services to all our residents, not just some, by elevating the awareness of our county responsibility, our programs and our services that we provide to all the citizens in this county. That's what it does, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, I appreciate that. Any questions?
It's great. Gage has done, and Gage is, through his service throughout decades, has exemplified that both locally and in the state, and you're a, I appreciate you bringing that now to the county and making that more of a point, because you'll have great effect here.
Thank you. I'm excited to see this go forward, as well as I know that the fellow commissioners are, so I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Commissioner Forre, we appreciate that. Next up is the Crystal Bowl Award. I'm going to turn the time over to Commissioner Harvey for that.
Well, Commissioner, thank you very much. We have a couple of awards that each year, this Weber County Commission, we look for an outstanding person, and we look for an outstanding business. Oftentimes, you know, a lot of times awards are given to people who, you know, are very magnanimous in the community. But this year, not only have they, are they big in the community, but a lot of times they've served in quiet. They've served, they just come to work and done their job and helped lots and lots of people. And there's an example, the example that we as a commission have chosen to resonate this is this crystal bowl. And I'd like to, I'd like to have my, in this presentation, my lovely assistant, Vanna Scott Jenkins. Could you give an example of how this crystal bowl works?
I can't do that. You simply give it a tap. Pretty cool, huh? It's all in your wrist.
So a lot of times that impact happens, like Commissioner Jenkins just showed you, it happens, but then it gives a pure and powerful sound that resonates for a long period of Resonates throughout a community. It's comparable to the generous people that we're going to talk about here today. The first one I'd like to talk about is a little company, little unassuming company out in Harrisville on Highway 89, out there, 1380 North Highway 89. Years ago, there was a young man who was educated right here in Ogden, Utah, and decided to move away and go to veterinary school. He came back and in the early 1960s, opened a veterinary clinic, Ben Lohman Animal Clinic. He bought his equipment, and then back then, if you, those of you can remember the 60s vintage, their old metal tables with chrome chairs and things like that, he opened just a small little office with a little room off to the side, paneling, and opened this clinic and started helping people with their small animals. Hasn't done a lot of large animals, but people over the decades have gone to Owen Linsley and brought their, their animals to him. He was off and opened 24 hours a day, seven days a week, would take calls at home, at nights, on Sundays, on holidays, because their animals, many times in families, are part of the family, you know, are part of their family, an extension of their family. He, they don't, they're not a place that has a lot of fancy equipment, but they've just got a lot of knowledge and know-how. The Ben Lohman Animal Clinic continues to operate today. Now, you think about that, we're about 60 years later. Owen's son, David, now runs the clinic. Owen comes in still a couple of days a week as he's now in his 88th year, but still goes in and practices medicine on animals, and pretty much can look at an animal and like Dr. Doolittle, almost talk to him and figure out what's wrong with him. It's a no-frills clinic with a great staff, and a lot of times that knowledge is hard to come by anymore. But I tried to put a number on the people that have frequented that clinic from our valley, our Ogden Valley and the Upper Valley, and I couldn't even come close, because there are cars that come in and out of there all day long. They really don't do a lot of appointments. Animals usually don't talk to their owners and tell you, hey, listen, I'm going to be sick, or I'm going to need to go into the doctor next week. When the animal's sick, you just pick him up and go, and that's how they've operated their business. David has a, has a lot of knowledge himself and has served this community, just with some of the other members, the dogs and cats and birds and other things for a long, long time. He kennels them, he does, just does everything, and it's been an amazing business. And so this first, this first Crystal Bowl Award, I want to recognize to the Ben Lohman Animal Clinic. If you'll give me a, if you'll give them a round of applause, I'd appreciate it. Now, I will tell you, like with many things, David's unable to be here today. Why? Because he had customers show up. That speaks volumes to them, so we'll make sure that they get this recognition. Thank you. I'm going to move on now, commissioners, if we can, to our next recipient. That was the business. Now we're on to the individual. Let me read what we have here, but I think commissioners, the two of you, I'm going to ask to participate here. Our next Crystal Bowl Award goes to Reed Richards. Reed has dedicated his life to improving the quality of life for Weber County and all of Utah. He's helped establish the Children's Justice Center in Weber County and then other centers throughout homes, or throughout Utah. He worked with the legislature to adopt over 150 changes to criminal law. He established and found funding for victim service programs all throughout the state. He developed and implemented crime prevention programs on child abuse, domestic violence, gang, drug abuse, senior fraud, and senior abuse. He helped create the RAMP Steering Committee, spent countless hours going door-to-door to get RAMP on the ballot, and then again, to get voters to vote in favor of it. This has helped contribute nearly $39 million, $38,594,330, to be exact, to date, for recreation, arts, museum, and parks throughout Weber County. Many of the facilities that all of you go to, attend, see, have been touched by RAMP because this man helped create it. Reed and his wife Martha, and I'm of the opinion behind every great man is a greater woman, have also chosen in their life to serve their fellow men. They won't want it said, but this is a time we're going to do it anyway. They've served quietly their neighbor, their fellow men, and others. They've served their church. They've served their God. They've served each other. Through my 35 years working in the Ogden community, Reed Richards has always been someone that I've known and looked up to because of the many ways he's touched so many people. I have not spoken to an individual who has ever said anything disparaging about Reed or Martha. I know other, no other greater compliment to give them. I have the utmost respect for both of you, who you are and what you have done. I thank you for that. Commissioners, anything on, anything more on that?
Yeah, I would just like to echo that same thoughts. If you look back at the history of Weber County and Ogden City, the Richards family stands out as being a pioneer family, and I remember dealing with Reed and some of his relatives in the legal profession over the last 40-some years that I've been active in the business community here. I've had some great experiences with Reed at the legislature, and he always seemed to point me in the right direction on bills that I just needed a little direction on and a little clarity, so, but he always did that in a kind and thoughtful manner. I could always appreciate Reed's perspective on, at least, why he thought a particular piece of legislation should go forward or should not. We did not always agree in the final outcome, but we did agree, at least, that we gave each other a good reason for agreeing on certain principles, so. And I appreciate Reed's involvement and his family's involvement in this community for the many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I'd like to echo that, too. I have really enjoyed my involvement with Reed Richards at the legislature. It has been a lot of fun. We have fought a lot of wonderful battles down there, and we lost a lot of them, and we've won a lot of them, and Reed, I've really enjoyed getting to know you and know your family, and you're just a wonderful individual, wonderful individual. And now I'm on the commission, nothing's changed. It's just been a lot of fun. You are one of those people that you look up to, and I have to agree, kind of quiet, you don't make a big splash, but you're always there, working hard, and I just have absolutely loved my time that we've spent together. It's, I can't think of anybody that's more worthy of this award than you. So it's good to have you here. Thank you, and congratulations.
Will you join us in giving Reed and Martha a round of applause, please? Reed will ask you to come up here so we can give you the bowl and this award, maybe take a picture, and we also want to thank Shelley and Stacy and Christie in our office for getting this all arranged and everything else. Appreciate that. Martha? Can't you come and stand here right in the middle with Reed? We've got some whole missing work right here.
You can just put that on the inside of it.
Yeah, it is cool, isn't it?
One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
I'll just say, we've loved living in Weber County and being associated with all who contribute and serve to make it such a great place to live and raise a family, so, thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, Weber County really is our home. We've been here for a long, long time now, and I've worked all over the state and actually all over the country, but my heart has always been here. I think about the county government. I started in county government doing work with them when I was elected county attorney 32 years ago, and have been somewhat affiliated with the county in some respect or another ever since. I remember the commissioners back then. It was Lowell Peterson, Bill Bailey, and Bob Hunter. Every one of those, just unique characters, and people who have, in their position as commissioners, but also in their positions throughout the community, have added so much to the community, and that's really what a county commission can do and what county government can do. I can't think of any entity in government that provides more for quality of life than the counties. The state does a lot, much funding and other things, but the real rubber meets the road at the county level, I think, and that's a wonderful opportunity to serve in the county and to be involved in some of the projects that were mentioned and many, many more. So many things that change lives and change the feelings of people about their community can be done by working county government. So thank you very much for that opportunity. These three commissioners are all very special to me, and I can talk a long time about each one, and I could probably embarrass each one of you pretty good. But I appreciate the friendship with each of you and with the many other officials that are here that I've known for so many years, and just thank you very much for this opportunity to say something, and thank you so much for this award.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, that's wonderful. I tell you, that's a great way to start a meeting. Well, I have two things now that I'm going to bring up. First is I want to, we had our IT people the other day, or actually, what is Sasha? What do we call her?
Home and Communications.
Oh, she's a Republican. Communications, yeah.
Sasha was the one I thought we shouldn't employ when I was outside the county looking in, and now I'm inside the county looking at her. I think, man alive, we couldn't do any of this without her. So anyway, she is the owner and a contractor in the county of the Adichio Group. And the other day, I wanted to fly the river, and so I have a two-minute and 27-second video I'm going to show you here of the Weber River that's going to tell you, show some of the projects that we spent, what, $11 million working on, and getting that river ready for today, right now. Because, you know, the river's running high right now. We were told the other day that the river was running 1,800 cubic feet per second, well, 2,580 cubic feet per second in Plain City. So that's, that's after it's gone through the confluence, it's after it's gone through the headwaters, which you will, or not the headwaters, but the head gates, which we will show you here, and it's out through Plain City. So the river's running very, very high right now, and Gage was telling us this morning that there's a flood rock. Where's that flood rock, Gage?
It's not an official flood rock, but I guess it's my flood rock. It's right below the, the center of the river, just about a block and a half below west of the Oaks.
There you go, so just a block and a half west of the Oaks, and he says, when that rock gets covered up, you need to worry. Well, he says this morning, coming down the river, that rock was covered.
It's covered up.
So it's, it's running right at peak right now, the river, and frankly, after this rainstorm- And frankly, after this rainstorm we had this morning, I suspected about six or seven hours, that river will be really high again as that comes down. So, anyway, I'm ready for that video right now. So, this video starts right here above the confluence. Go ahead, you can push play. And this is a guy and his father who are out there walking. And I said, just stand there and we'll zoom over you. So, there he is. And you can see this is the Ogden. Actually, it's hard to tell. That might have been the Weber. Well, and then you go down from there down to the, this is the headgate assembly. So, the, this is the Wilson Canal. That's the main river. And to the right, this is the canal that goes out to Willard Bay. Now, as you go down the river, this is Plain City right here. And this is where they take those readings that I just told you. They said it was twenty-five eighty. And you can see, as you fly around here, you can see how they've cleaned up the edges of the river and just, this is down a little lower in Warren. And once again, look at the river. You can see a pile of wood there that they've taken off. Now, we're going to go to the Little Weaver. The Little Weaver right here. And this is the headgate assembly to that. And this is when the river gets in flood stage, this is how we relieve it. We open that up and it goes west. See how it comes right out of there? A little standing water in it, but as you can see, the headgates are shut right now. This is Gary Nelson's house on the right. This is how that goes all the way out. Then you can see that headgate right there. That crossing is just below the Warren Cemetery. Now, this is when you get out to Ogden Bay. And you'll notice these are some headgate assemblies out there. And this is where they had, where they had those guys go out and tear those out before because they were flooding. And you can see all the wetlands out there. So, those right, ah, anyway, that's that headgate assembly that they put in there. And the way they built those headgates, that all just overflows now out there. So, when the water gets so high, it just overflows. And some of those headgates actually move and you can lower them to increase the output. So, they've done a pretty good job in preparing that river for today. Now, we'll see how it works this next week or two and how the weather comes and how this snow comes out. But if these guys who designed it, if they knew what they were doing, and I think they did, this should work okay for, for the county and all the folks that are surrounding that, those two rivers. Not very many people see that from start to finish. And it's interesting to go down and see all those places. Okay. Now, as you can see, on the agenda, I'm supposed to give a, a state of the county address. This kind of took me a little bit by surprise. I wasn't really prepared for it, but I've got a little prepared in the last few days on this. And so, I want to talk a little bit about the state of the county. First of all, I want to mention that a former commissioner, James Ebert, is here today. And James, we want to call attention to you. It's good to have you in the room. You're, you're missed. We really enjoyed, I really enjoyed my time working with you. And you were a wonderful commissioner. And I, I just want you to know, I'm glad to have you back here today. It's good to have you here. So, when I started looking through the county, and I've been here just eleven months now. And I say, well, what's, what's happened in the last ten and a half, eleven months since I've been here? Well, I'll tell you what, some of the things that's happened as I go through here. First of all, we ended the cash payouts for elected officials on their health care. That was one of the biggest things we've done. We had started the process prior to Gage getting here, when James was here. And we, it kind of went in a couple of steps that it took us to get to that point. But we have taken those steps. And in fact, those cash payouts don't exist anymore. So, they've gone away. And it's, I think the public, I, I don't know about you gentlemen, you commissioners, but I've received a lot of attaboys from the citizenry out there. They felt like this was unfair and wanted it stopped. And we did it. And I feel really good about what we've done there. Secondly, budget. You know, we've done really good in working our budget. The, the county was, is, a couple of the funds we had were behind the eight ball. They'd, they were underfunded and we had troubles with them. So, when we got together and Gage, Commissioner Ebert was here and we invited you in. So, it was really kind of a four-man team that worked on the budget this year. But as we did that, we were able to take some ongoing money and substitute it for some one-time money. And we were able to do some creative work. And we were able to turn around some pretty good things in the county. We, we solved the nine-one-one shortage over there. We, when I run in my campaign, I told the people that I felt like we should make small little corrections as we go versus great big corrections, which we did on the nine-one-one. We had a very small increase over there. I think it worked out to be about twenty-six cents a month for the average home. But it allowed the nine-one-one emergency services to stay complete. When we look at the, where the budget as a whole is right now, the county's very healthy and strong financially. Our bond on the Echols, Ogden-Echols Convention Center and the Weber Center will be paid off at the end of this year. So, that relieves responsibilities there. And so, I'm feeling really good about where the, where the budget is this year. Really happy with it. And it was a pleasure working with all four, all three of you through that process. It was really somewhat energizing to me. I really quite enjoyed it because we, we approached this with a very brisk, robust effort from all of us. We all fought for the things we felt we should finance and the things we didn't feel like we should finance. And we came up with good ideas between all of us. And at the end of the day, when we were through, I was, I was very energized by the process we went through. And it was a lot of fun to be involved in it. And I felt like we, we really ended up with a tremendous budget this last year for 2019, the one we're going through right now. So, I was really pretty excited about that. I really felt like we did a good job. Next is we held a, a meeting with the citizens of Ogden Canyon. That's something that I'm not aware had been done before. And we reached out to them to see if we couldn't help them on some of their infrastructures and create a little service district for them. They had problems with some water lines up there and some bridges and even some snow plowing that had, had issues. And I felt bad because they were very suspect of what we were trying to do. They didn't want to trust government. And there were several of them that said, just stay out of our lives. And in the end, that is what we did. We, we backed away from them and said, okay, if you want to get together and want us to help you, we would be glad to help you. But we, we backed away. But we, we reached a hand of friendship out to them to let them know that we would help them if they. You know, the infrastructure up there, when you looked at Ogden Canyon, that's kind of the first area that people started building homes and dwellings outside of Ogden City to recreate and spend the summer in. And some of those homes up there are really, really old. And some of them are all but shacks anymore. And they're really, and some of them are very nice. I don't want to talk just negative. Some of them are very nice. And so, the water lines that are put into these areas and the bridges that they run over, we had somebody break through one of the bridges a couple of years ago. And some of those need repair and they're privately owned. So, we were just trying to help them create something that would allow them to, as a group, get together and solve these problems. But you know how that goes. If you don't have an issue today, it's not your problem. But if you do have an issue today, of course, you want to help everybody to help share your problem. And that's just the way it is. We understand. Like I say, we didn't really know if it'd work out or not. We just offered a friend, a hand of help there. And they chose not to take advantage of it. One, one thing that we've started since the first of the year that has really turned out good is we have a work, a weekly work meeting as county commissioners. Every Monday, we sit down and go over our agendas for the week and the things that are happening. And it's a public meeting. We, we publish it up and invite people to look at it or come and participate. But it's, it's turned out to be one of the most important meetings we have, isn't it? It's been really a joy to be able to go in there and work with these commissioners on those things and have that meeting. And we've just accomplished a ton in there. It's really made me happy. I've enjoyed this meeting. In fact, Commissioner Harvey said just the other day, he said, it's the most important meeting we ever have. So, I don't know how we got along without it. It is. It's turned into a great meeting. We all really enjoy participating in it. We started construction this year on a new building at the archery range. We, we were able to get some grants, some money from the state of Utah. And we had some other monies around. And we, we were wondering how to spend that. You know, how government spends money, it's pretty tough to do. It takes a lot of engineering and a lot of background that gets, goes into the building. And so, when we got into that, we thought, well, we don't have a lot of money there. And if we don't spend that, we're going to lose it. So, we thought, let's just, let's just cut this to the bare bones and go out there and put the building up. And then we'll worry about how to finish it off, what to do with it later. And so, that's kind of the, the idea of how we attacked it and what we went after. And as it turned out, Marty and Todd and all you guys, you got together and did that very thing. And it's fun to report today that they're out there actually grubbing the site. It's been grubbed and the bids are out. And we anticipate that that'll all come back in the, the next few days. And we think, I do, that's my opinion, but I think you guys share it, that we, we think with the money we've got, we're going to be able to go out and put that building up and with some volunteer labor and a few other things, create one of the state-of-the-art, best shooting ranges in the state of Utah for indoor archery shooting. It's just turned out that the building, they were hoping to get an eighty by about a hundred and twenty or thirty, something like that. We ended up getting a hundred by two fifty. So, the actual square footage of the building's more than double. And it's long and it's going to, it's just going to create a tremendous shooting facility. We've had archers talk to us and many of them are very excited about it. So, we'll be able to, it'll be interesting to see how that goes. But the thing that excites me about that, it's how we spent the government money and how we accounted for it and the operational cost. That'll be at a very low level. It won't, the county's not going to be on the hook for a lot of expense. And it's going to be exciting. The other thing we did that has to do with Culture Parks and Recreations, we turned the, we turned the gun, shooting range, over to them. Took it away from the sheriff. It was something that the sheriff did, but they weren't really suited to do it. And so, there weren't a lot of hard feelings that I'm aware of by anybody. And so, we decided to make that move. And Culture Parks and Recreations just picked up on that and run with it. And they've done, they've already made changes and it's just off and running. So, we're really excited about that. The library. Previous commissioners chose to bond for a library expansion and remodels. And I think it was in the fifty million dollar range is the final bond they decided to go out for. And we just had the final building in the whole bunch finished. The main library, they just had a, what do you call it? A ribbon cutting, groundbreaking for the, the main library finished. And in this whole thing, they were given an award. It's the outstanding remodel award in the nation for what they did over there. So, it's, it's really exciting to see what Linda Wing's Guard and the library system has done and what they've done with libraries in the county. I'm really excited about it. And they did it under budget. I think there ends up being about three and a half million dollars left in that account that is unspent. So, Linda, I tip my hat to her. She's done a great job for the county. I'm really impressed with what she's done. We removed the tent at the transfer station. We finally got that removed. And you kind of laugh about it and say, well, was it that big of a deal? Actually, it was a big deal. We had a hard time deciding where we're going to move it to. And it didn't fit anywhere. And we just had a hard time deciding if we were just going to take it down. And once we decided to take it down, we had a hard time getting bids. One bid came in exceptionally low compared to all the rest. And we decided to take it. And man, they come in and had that down like that. So, I suspect they made money on that bid and I'm glad they did. But it, it removed that tent. We've got it moved to the side now. We've actually got somebody who's interested in purchasing it from us. So, we might even get rid of it yet. So, we're excited about that. So, that turned out to be a very positive thing in the county. We made an announcement a few weeks ago about the fact that Weber Human Services and Weber Morgan Health Department decided to join forces and start a new organization called Center of Excellence. We're excited big time as commissioners about this because we think that it's going to allow them to serve the underserved in our community at a much higher level. So, the concept behind the Center of Excellence is to help all nonprofits and service providers in the county. In fact, I had a in their announcement, they said, it is a position, oh, they talked about this. They said, the purpose of this is to lead efforts to align partners and programs from the industry, educations, the social sector organizations, government, public sector bodies, and integrate and navigate complex economic, social and workforce development systems to deliver improved outcomes. You know, Gage and I as legislators have been down to the legislature for years. And every year, we watch each individual organization from Weber County come down there and lobbyists for some sort of allocation of funds. And what ends up happening as a result, they have to hire lobbyists and they have to workers and it just creates a, a lot of times they have to do this. So, our hope is that this organization will help relieve that and that they'll help these folks unify in their fundraising and also in their desire to deliver services to the underserved. They will be able to work closer with each other. They're going to operate on the top floor of the health department over there. They have some room over there to, to do that. And I, we're just really excited. I think this could be one of the most important things that we've done in the county since we've been here. If this turns out like we all hope it to. I hate, I'm, I'm not a guy that wants to see government expand. That, that, I hate to see that. But this is one of those times where they're really not expanding. They're taking the same funds that they've been allocating anyway. And they're using them to join together to double their ability to serve. And so, I don't view this as an expansion of government. I view this as a wiser way for government to serve the constituents that it was created to do. So, I'm really excited about that. That's one of the top things I think that'll happen this year. One of the other things I'm way excited about is, this started back when Commissioner Ebert was here. A joint venture between Weber and Davis County. was here, a joint venture between Weber and Davis County for joint economic development. Commissioner Harvey always says, when somebody comes to northern Utah to try to locate their business, they don't know where the county line is between Weber and Davis County. And I agree with that. This is an idea that was come up with before I got here. And I've just kind of joined in the push to get it through. But we were able to get $300,000, $1,000 last year from the legislature. And we've put that together with this joint venture with the counties. And we got that done. And then we turned it over to Commissioner Faur to put it all together. And he's got it all put together and the RFP's gone out for us to provide a, to award a provider to do this. And we're right within days of doing that. And Commissioner Faur has taken this and run with it and we've been very, very pleased with what he's done. So we're excited where this is going. And I anticipate within a week, that'll be awarded. And hopefully, within three weeks, they'll have their people hired and we'll be up and running by mid-May.
Exactly.
So we're excited. It takes, boy, it took a long time. We were hoping to get it done closer to the first of the year, but who knows? It just takes time. That's the way government works. It's slow. But anyway, it worked in this case. So this joint venture's up and going. When I look at big wins at the legislature this year, we, Commissioner Faur and myself, having been previous legislators, felt comfortable going down there and working with UAC and other people down there that are associated with the counties. And I was a little surprised. I didn't anticipate that we would make that big of a difference, frankly. And when we got down there, gee, man, everybody knew us and they asked us to help them lobby for different things. And we, in fact, one week, Commissioner Faur was there five days. I was only there four days in one week. It was my max. But one time, Commissioner Faur was down there for five days. And we really were busy down there this year. But I wanted you to notice that there were 11 items that we were following and pushing and 10 of the 11 items, we were able to pass and were successful with. So the county, UAC, the county associations, they were very happy with the way things worked out. So that was a good win for us this year. Another one that we're getting ready to do right now, we're putting together and hopefully within the next six, eight weeks, we'll have this all done. We're getting ready to go into garbage service in the county. We are finding out that most people in the county are signing up for a garbage service and most of them are paying $25 to $30 a month for that service. And this is an appropriate service for government to be in. It is in in all the cities. And so we made a decision to do that. And based on the awards that we've received so far, they've come in and we've reviewed them and we think we'll be able to cut the cost of the services that our constituents are paying by about half. So it's a pretty good deal and I'm excited to do that. This is, this is an expansion of government a little bit here, but I think it was basically worth doing and it's going to end up saving our constituents a fair amount of money. So I felt comfortable with that. When I came in, the parking structure, I was told that we had to do something with that because it was, it was, had been not, well, the top floor had been condemned. And so we stopped using the top floor and we had to replace the parking structure. Well, as we got talking about it, I remember in one of our meetings, we said, "Well, gee, maybe we ought to consider selling the air above the parking structure if we're going to go ahead and do that." So it's taken a little bit of time to put that together, but we are out for bids today to see, we have three developers that have come in that are qualified by what we ask them, their qualifications to be. And they're going to give us bids on putting a new parking structure in and things that they would like to do on top of that. And hopefully, they'll tell us that they want to be involved in it and buy that air or somehow develop something on top of it. So we're trying to be careful about how we use the public's money. And we're trying to do the best we can at helping their money go further, the public's money, and being frugal on the things that we're doing here. We think that these things are appropriate. Plus, you know, the size of the structure is probably going to increase some. Right now, downtown Ogden, parking is a big deal. It's hard to find parking in downtown Ogden. So we're helping to address that too. Next thing that's happening right now is Spike 150, the sesquicentennial of the joining of the rails up in Box Elder County. Now, between the 8th and 10th of May, we anticipate between 200 and 250,000 people in downtown Ogden for those three days. We've got the big steam locomotives coming, the largest steam locomotive ever built. And I can get the number on the other one. Do you remember those numbers? Anyway, yeah, they're the biggest and they're coming and they will be out here during that time.
In Ogden.
In Ogden. And all the hotels are full and it's a pretty cool thing that's happening right now. And it's going to be a great big celebration in the county. And we're excited. In fact, we met with our convention visitor bureau yesterday and they're waiting for that day to come because they're exhausted. They've spent three-fourths of their time recently just on that. And so it's a big deal. And you know, I happen to be old enough, I remember when it was 100 year. What's that, a sesquicentennial?
It's a centennial.
Centennial, yeah, the centennial. Yeah. You weren't even born there, were you, Harv?
We were in high school.
Yeah, we were in high school, Gage and I.
He was maybe kindergarten.
I was still in kindergarten.
He was in kindergarten. That's right. All right. Something else has happened in this last year is the citizens in West Weber County petitioned the state to create a new city out west. Now, we were told about five weeks ago that they didn't reach the threshold they needed to, to do that. So we, I contacted the planning department and we were going to start on the master plan out west again. Well, then we were told about two weeks ago, we got another email from the lieutenant governor's office and they said, "Well, we've kind of looked at that a little different way. We looked at it..." And they have, in fact, met the requirement to do that. So I contacted planning and said, "Okay, put everything on hold again. We're not going to do it because we got to see how this works out." So that's a big deal in the county right now to create a new city. And this will be a good sized city, depending on how they qualify, what they decide to do. So Western Weber County, it'll be interesting to see how that goes and we wish them well. A lot of people say, "Well, you guys don't want us to be a city." But actually, I'd love Western Weber County to be a city. A lot of our problems go away if that happens and I'm into self-government and I think if they want to be a city, they should be. And I hope that they, in fact, are successful in their effort. I wanted to mention, while I was doing a State of the State, you know, we had one of the best clean air, clean air years that we've ever had this year. The winter was wonderful. I think we only had four days with an inversion in Weber County. And these storms coming through every seven to 10 days. Our air was spectacular up here. I can't remember the last time I was able to look, day after day, up at the Wasatch Front, and see these gorgeous snow-packed mountains of ours. We just had a great year as far as clean air was. Boy, I tell you. In fact, I want to make sure everybody remembers, the air's never been cleaner in Utah than it is today, since they've been keeping track, 1952. So that's the, and you know, we keep doing things to clean it up. We had a water heater bill a couple of years ago that demanded ultra-low NOx on the heaters and many of the boilers are that way now. And the, about the last thing to do is tier-three fuels. And that's coming down the pike. It won't be too many years before that's done. We just got to keep the, keep the pressure on it, keep doing it. So great year. As far as what happened in the county this year, we had a couple of things that were fairly major. We had to rebuild the sewage and stormwater pumps out at the Golden Spike Arena. We just finished that and they were pretty big. That was a fairly big deal to do that. We had to put a new boiler and a storage tank in at the Kiesel jail. We put a new boiler upstairs in this building. That was in the fall of the year. So, but that all happened this year. So we had some major renovations we had to do. Real estate values in the county. Commissioner Faur, you know this, they've probably never been better than they are right now. We've got great real estate values in our county.
Highest ever.
Yeah, oh, really, highest ever. There you go. New home starts were still brisk in Weber County. They're not as high as they were and some of the other parts of the state are slowing down. But in Weber County, they're still good. Our home starts are good and we've done very, very well. We added a new boys and girls club. Commissioner Harvey reminded me of that, a start the other day in South Ogden. So that puts five in the county right now. And of course, we're very supportive of what's happening there. These are all things that help our county be better. We have got a couple of things we've got yet to do. One of them is we have a snowplow issue at Summit. People don't understand how hard it is for us to service Summit and Powder Mountain area. They, most ski resorts are built with the resort being at the bottom of the mountain and you, you take people up on the chairlifts. Well, Powder Mountain is just the opposite. That is a town built on top of a mountain at 9,000 feet and you run the ski lifts down. So we have a three and a half mile section of road up there that the county owns. And we plow that road some days 20 times. 20 times we plow that road. We don't, we don't really just plow, we snow blow. We have this massive piece of machinery that goes up there and we blow that, that snow. And the wind is so horrific at days on there that we just can't hardly keep that open. And we had one point this year where we'd been up there from 4:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon and we had three people, all our CDLs that were qualified to be on that mountain were there. Well, the law requires, you have to, you can't run a CDL driver over 10 hours. And we had them at 11, so we were already over the law. And so we just had no ability to do anymore. So we notified them that we were going to pull off the mountain and go home. Well, they want to be able to operate like a town up there all the time. Well, and it wasn't the new snow, it was the wind that was blowing. So anyway, they were very upset with us and there's just nothing we could do. We didn't have the ability to do anymore. And we were there the next morning at 4:30, opened it up and everything was okay again and we got it going. But it is hard. When they're, when the manager of their water district come in the other day, we were talking a little bit to him about that. And he told us, he says, "You know, working up there in the winter is like working in Alaska." He says, "People don't understand." He said, "We had to dig a hole to get into a water line." And he said, "The snow, we had to remove eight or 10 feet of snow to get to the ground. And then we had to dig a hole five feet deep." And by the time we got that all dug, we'd filled up with snow again from the, from the drifting, the wind. He says, "It's just about impossible to work up there in the winter in the ground." So it's a tough deal that we're working under there. And we're working that on a regular basis, the three commissioners, and we feel, we feel pretty good about the fact that we'll have something solved there this year. We're, we meet with them on a regular basis and we're planning on doing that. Finally, one other thing that we need to do this year, we need to get our municipal services fund fixed. That's the last thing financially that is out of whack in the county. When I came in, we had several different things and between us all, we got together and we were able to solve all of them. And we've got, we're well on the way to solving this issue, but we're not there yet. But we've got, we've got to do some more work this summer and fall and to get our financial house in order on the municipal services fund. But we've done really good on it. We're just not quite there yet. And finally, you know, the morale in the county is very high right now. It's, it's good and everybody enjoys working for us and it's as high as I've seen it. And the relationship we have between those commissioners is a good, solid relationship. We're very respectful of each other. We enjoy each other's company. I just want you to know, I appreciate you commissioners and your time and effort that you put in, your wonderful servants, public servants. And it does not go unnoticed, we've had several people that have talked about how well the county is doing the last little while. And James, this goes back to you when you were here too. We all got along well. And it doesn't, it doesn't just happen. We have to work hard at getting along well. We don't always vote the same. In fact, a lot of times, we don't vote the same. And I suspect we'll have one of those votes coming up here in just a few minutes. But I, I just want you to know, we work hard at being cordial and courteous to each other and it's appreciated. And I want you to know, we work very hard and it's good. So that is my report today on the state of the county. It's in good shape. So thank you very much. Next item on our agenda are the consent items. So under the consent items, we have the warrants at 1754 through 1764 and 438316 through 438567 in the amount of $2,259,000. Request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $114,613. Approval of the minutes and a request for approval of contracts binding between Weber County and the following ramp grants. Imagine Ballet 2019 season, Nurture and Creative Minds Ogden Arts Festival and Nurture and Creative Minds Street Pianos. So these are contracts that were awarded by the Ramp Commission and we're just approving them. Questions or, let's see, Ricky, do you want to highlight those?
You bet. This week, we issued 21 purchase orders for $115,000. Just over a third of that amount, or $41,000, is for the health department to purchase vaccines. 13% or $15,000 is for our IT department and that's to purchase software as well as hardware. 12% or $14,000 is for the roads and that is for the truck repair up at Powder Mountain. 10% or $12,000 is for the garage and that's to purchase an ATV. 9% or $11,000 is for property management and that is purchasing tables and supplies. For checks, we issued 263 checks this week for $2.3 million. 37% of that amount, or $836,000, is employee health insurance premiums. 20% or $454,000 is for the transfer station and disposal fees. 8% or $191,000 is for paramedic services, that's our monthly payment. And then 5% or $117,000 was payments made for public defender contracted services. And that is it for the purchases and checks.
Thank you, sir. So I have one thing on there that I'm not happy with. And that is on our purchase orders, $12,000 for an ATV for Stones. And that is on our purchase orders, $12,000 for an ATV for Stones. Is there anybody from, uh, yes?
Bill.
Come on up and talk to us a little bit about this.
That's Devron.
Devron? You've got to justify that to me.
Good morning, commissioners. I'd be happy to tell you what's going on here. Um, as you know, we have hundreds of survey monuments all over the county. In fact, we have eight monuments every square mile. And that's regardless of whether that square mile is on the top of Mount Ecristo or the top of Mount Ogden or out in the alkaline playa's right next to the lake. So, uh, our office is tasked with getting to these monuments, maintaining them, keeping them in good working order so that all of the property owners can use those and that, uh, that reference system for their property ownership. Um, we currently have in our office the availability of two trucks and two four-wheelers. Uh, we use those trucks and four-wheelers to get out to these places, uh, that are fairly inaccessible by walking or that would take too long to get there by walking. Uh, we have in the past, uh, been unfortunate with taking our trucks down roads that we probably shouldn't be taking trucks down and, and causing damage to our trucks. So, uh, in discussing these items with our fleet manager, um, also in addition to the wanting to maintain our trucks in better working order, we have four-wheelers that are getting a little long in the tooth, that are getting ready to need to be replaced, uh, the two four-wheelers that we use. In talking to our fleet manager, he suggested that perhaps we go a different route, uh, where we could be a little safer than, than a four-wheeler, uh, and we could carry our equipment and get out to these inaccessible locations and still maintain our, our, uh, trucks and vehicles in a good working order. So, at his suggestion, um, we opted to, uh, go a different direction, getting an ATV that has a utility bed that we can take our tools in and, and surplusing our four-wheelers and then not lifting our trucks and not trying to take our trucks down these Forest Service roads and these other places where we've tried to go in the past.
Thank you. So when they came to me and talked to me about this, uh, it was fleet that came to me and talked to me about it and they, they told me that, that they were talking about lifting those trucks and putting little bigger tires on them to help them. And, uh, in the conversation, they says, "You know, we think we'd be as easy, as well off to buy an ATV and then have them be able to take that out and go in the field with it side by side." And that's, that's common. It happens a lot more. My only concern is visually, from the people's point of view, when they see a county employee in an ATV, I worry about the perception, what it looks like. It doesn't look like we're working, it looks like we're playing so many times. Anyway, I'm, I'm having a little heartburn with this. I just want you to know that. Uh, is there any comments by either of you you wish to make on this?
Well, you know, I, I think we're gonna have to leave that up to Devron and his crew. Obviously, the monuments are something that we are charged with maintaining, it's very important. I actually have worked in some of those areas, uh, not in Weber County, but in, uh, the Wasatch Forest and replacing some of those monuments. I can appreciate that taking trucks into those areas is just not feasible a lot of times. And, uh, I, I, I look at it as a possible benefit to the taxpayer to the sense that if we were to pay somebody to walk into some of these sites or from the hourly rate, uh, we're gonna be a lot more efficient by giving them transportation in. And I'm, I'm assuming that's kinda what your thoughts are, Devron, or?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I understand what Commissioner Jenkins is saying. I under, I appreciate that perception and we try very hard. We wear our vests that have the county logo on them. We have our equipment with us, you know, we're never just out there willy-nilly looking around and hopefully we, and I'd be happy to put our county logo on this ATV or whatever it would take to, to let the citizens know. Generally, we're on private property. The property owners have already allowed us to come out there and they know why we're coming out there. So, I can do whatever it would take to try to mitigate those concerns.
So, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this, Commissioner. I think, you know, I've run into some people from the weed department, uh, up in my area before on four-wheelers and, you know, never came to mind that they were out, they had their sprayers in the back and were out doing their job. So, I think as long as they're doing their job and they're serving the public, we can justify that. But, uh, obviously, that's Devron's position to make sure that happens.
I like the idea too, Devron. Not only do I think you should, but I, I would almost make that a prerequisite, that all of our pieces of machines are labeled and, uh, there's no problem with that. You, I, I've known, uh, your folks to, to, to be genuine in what they're doing and, and there should be no hiding that we're out there, uh, serving the public and if we find a piece, a, a piece of equipment, I think a side-by-side's a lot better piece of equipment to do this than is a four-wheeler. I think it's a good idea and it's just, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, but I think this is a, uh, with gauge on this, I think it's a good way and plus that truck bed will make it more efficient for us. And so, I like the idea of two guys traveling together instead of the liability of a four-wheeler. I just think it makes really good sense and, uh, and I'm glad that we're able to, to, and a plus, I think on the flip side, I think financially it makes better sense because I like the idea of using a side-by-side rather than altering, uh, one of these vehicles that we're paying a lot of money for and, and could depreciate the value of it on the backside when we're trying to sell it. So, uh, it just makes good sense.
So I'm kinda odd man out here, aren't I?
No.
Well, we haven't had a vote yet.
Yeah. Well, and you've, I have to admit, you've kinda talked me into this. I, I see that you two are both positive towards it and, uh, I'm, I'm probably okay with that. All right, well, if that's the case, I'll call it. Thanks, Devron.
Thank you.
I'll, uh, go ahead and, uh, call the vote on, uh, item G.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I do. I would move to approve the consent items, including the side-by-side vehicle for, uh, Devron's department.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Well, that didn't look that bad.
Yeah, no. Okay. Very good. All right. Uh, next item is, and, under action items is request for approval of a contract binding between Weber County and Masters Touch LLC. John Bond.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thanks for letting me come and present this. Uh, I'm somewhat co-presenting with Ricky Hatch, our clerk auditor. We have an opportunity, uh, I'd like to, to present a request that we, uh, have you consider signing a contract for printing, mailing, and emailing valuation notices and tax notices with the Masters Touch who are in Spokane, Washington. There are three things that are affecting this decision. One is financial, one is our ability to serve the public and present a better communication to them, and third, being able to communicate in a different medium with the public. So let me talk about the financial piece first. Uh, years ago, we used to have a perforated tax notice. I'll probably speak more to the tax notice because I more, know more about that piece and if Ricky wants to jump in, jump in.
Yeah.
Uh, the tax notice used to have a perforation around the outside. At that time, the, uh, the, uh, cost of us sending out that, that tax notice, uh, was 63 cents. So 63 cents a piece to do that. Uh, we then took the perforation out, we just decided to go with an envelope and that's what we're currently doing with this. We just put tax notices in an envelope. Those were costing us 19 cents a piece. So we went from 62 cents down to 19 cents. The contract that we've got in front of you today takes not 62 cents or 19 cents, but 7.2 cents.
Oh.
Okay? To print. So it's a significant drop in price and we used to spend $47,000 to print the tax notice. Then we went down to about 19, got some changes done, got it down to about 16 this past year. We anticipate just about 11,000 if we go to this new contract. So, that's our goal is on the financial piece to save money. Now, we're also moving to a new, uh, way of communicating with the public. We've had several conversations over the last several months and, uh, with the valuation notice and tax notice, we're trying to figure out how to communicate better with the public so that they know where this money's going. It's taken some of us, me, a while to change. I sometimes don't change readily because we, it's a rigid process and to sustain that and to create reliability, that process needs to be really rigid in some, in some respects. Uh, we're, we've been working with Ricky and I and with, uh, commissioners and others to try and communicate differently with, with the public so that they know more readily who is being taxed, who's receiving the tax money, how to communicate with those entities, and do a different way of communicating with those. And so, uh, the clerk auditor with Ricky has changed the valuation notice in that regard. So not only do we have a financial drop also in the, of the valuation notice, but also with the tax notice, our communication to the public now will be different this year on the, on the valuation, on notice and tax notice, how we communicate. So we're working through those, uh, pieces of the puzzle. And the third piece of this is how we communicate, the medium. Uh, a few years ago, the treasurers, uh, we went to the, to the legislature and, uh, through legislator, uh, Osman out of, out of Utah County, the legislature agreed to let us communicate with the public electronically. Instead of sending them a notice in the mail, uh, they allowed us through this, which we were legally required to do, they now are allowing us to do, uh, do all of our communication electronically. We went with a, uh, we've gone with an electronic payment process for a number of years. Uh, last year, we took in $20 million that way and about 10,000 payments. Um, uh, this year, we're trying to communicate for the first time electronically the valuation notice and tax notice. We're setting the stages for that. The only company that we can find, we had a tour of Salt Lake County and they're doing it, but they've expended a lot of money and, uh, power to do this in-house. We've tried to do this in-house electronically, communicating with the, with the public. I think it'll cost too much money for us to do. We can do a thousand, uh, tax notices for a thousand bucks, we can do 10,000 notices for $3,000 through this company. It's one of the only companies we've found in the nation capable of keeping track of all the electronic components and pieces and parts, emails basically, and able to communicate with the public. So we're doing that. We think it will be very successful. We anticipate three to 5,000 of our 90,000 notices that go out, we anticipate three to 5,000 in the first three to four years. And after about the fifth year, we anticipate about, hopefully 10%, 10,000 notices going, communicating electronically, um, as well as paint electronically. That will reduce our pricing, but it takes advantage of the surge that we've got in our society now of going electronic. And I think, I think we can capture that market of citizens who wanna communicate in that medium. Those are the values of us going to this new company. Price, it gives us a chance to change the formatting and the way we communicate with our public and going into an electronic world more efficiently and effectively. And we'll be one of the first counties in this area to go with that. And, uh, last year, we had 1.7 million people log into our website. That's been able to reduce our phone calls in half in our office. So the electronic tool that we're using, we're trying to capture, be out front and be very progressive. Hopefully, it will, uh, be a service to the community. And that's our request today. Do you have thoughts?
Uh, I have, as far as the redesign, we'll spend a bunch of time talking about that, but we, we have drafts now back from the printer on the redesign. They've been excellent to work with. Uh, and we think it's gonna be a more readable document for the citizens and taxpayers. Uh, as far as savings, if we eventually get to the 10% save, uh, electronic participation that John is forecasting, which I think is a very manageable number, it will result simply in the clerk auditor's side of savings of $8,000 a year in reduced printing and postage, um, which is what we're always trying to do. We, we start out with pretty small budgets and we're just trying to squeeze and squeeze and, um, still have the best service for our citizens, uh, at the lowest possible cost. And, uh, this is just another incremental step that, uh, that we're taking to, to make that happen. So I'd encourage you to, uh, approve the doc, the contract.
Thank you. So, you know, I'm excited about this, John. First of all, Commissioner Harvey's pushed really hard to have some graphics on these that, so people can, uh, at a glance, look and see where they're paying their taxes, who it's going to. And, uh, some of the names are so close that everybody assumes it's the county that, uh, is getting the taxes and keeping it and in fact, we aren't. And hopefully, this will, uh, explain that. So I'm, I'm way excited to see, uh, you take that on. You've, uh, made my day here. But, uh, the fact you're doing it with a more than 50% cut, uh, I mean, how, how, how do you beat that?
It's our goal, is to make you happy.
Yeah. Oh, but you've done what made me happy. Hopefully, you've made the constituents happy.
Yeah. I hope we can communicate to the public that we're working hard in their behalf to save money, to save tax dollars, reduce our costs, be efficient.
I think you've made, uh, your point today. Commissioners, do you wanna, either of you wanna say, "Well, this is, this is great"? Mr. Ford?
John and Ricky, I just appreciate the work. I, I love the, the new tax form. I mean, that's questions that I get hit with almost every year is that where are these taxes going? What is, what is really on this form? I think the new form that I've seen is, is very transparent. Uh, it gives, uh, so it hopefully will help solve an issue that's always on people's mind is, why does the county use and need all that money when actually the county portion is a smaller portion of that? And so this will hopefully help educate the public too, so they, they are better educated as far as where those taxpayers' dollars go. So they may attend, uh, an occasional Ogden City or Weber County School Board meeting, uh, on a truth in taxation rather than, uh, assume that it all goes to us. I think it's, it's a step in the right direction. I appreciate your work on it.
I'm passionate about communicating effectively. Thank you, John, for, for ebbing and flowing as the process and, uh, becomes better. You've done this, uh, with the best financial interests in mind and you too, Ricky. I realize that there's part on one side, it's been part on the other. Thank you. This is important. It'll be a great step forward for our taxpayers.
If I can make one comment, our staff and Ricky's staff, we love them and they do a great job. We are connected at the hip with our IT department. Without them, we are not capable of pulling this off. So we're joined at the hip with them and they do a wonderful job for us and my appreciation goes out to, to all of them and everybody that we are working with. So thank you. That's the request that we've got in front of you.
Very good. Thank you, John. So, uh, commissioners, does anybody have any more questions or want to make a motion? I'm ready.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Masters Touch LLC.
I'd like to second that.
I have a motion as second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, commissioners.
It's approved. Thank you. John, we appreciate you. Well, I tell ya, once in a while, you get to, uh, you get excited about some reason. That's a good one right there.
It's a good one.
Yeah. Next is approval of local transportation funding agreement binding between, uh, Weber County and Plain City for 1975 North. Brooke Stewart, what can you tell us about that?
Yeah, thanks for having me today. Actually, these next four items that I will be presenting on are four of the six applications that were received during the 2018 application cycle that were, um, approved for recommendation by WACOG and then approved by the county commission back in November as part of the 2018 priority list. So this first project we have, it's for the local transportation funding agreement for the Plain City 1975 North project. Uh, the project's proposing to improve and widen about .01 miles of 1975 North from 3,600 West to 3,525 West. The agreement and recommendation was for, uh, 35,650 in corridor preservation funds as well as 162,468 in sales tax funds and those are programmed for the year 2021. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Commissioner? I know where you're talking about on this book.
I'll, uh, it's familiar. You entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready to go. I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the local transportation funding between Weber County and Plain City for the 1975 North project. Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, Brooke. Go ahead, next.
Thanks. So our next local transportation funding agreement is for the Pleasant View City Rule on White Boulevard project. This project is proposing to construct and extend Rule on White about .35 miles north to Parkland Boulevard. The agreement is for 119,481 in corridor preservation funds as well as 4,635,642 in sales tax funds for that construction and it is also programmed for 2021. Pleasant View City is contributing just short of 1.2 million in matching funds towards this project. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm, I'm really, really excited about this one. This opens up so much more than just what's being said right here, but for commercial and industrial, uh, development, for growing our economy, this will be-
and industrial development, for growing our economy, this will be fantastic for the citizens out there and it responsibly deals with that intersection that needs help. It's going to be wonderful.
It's going to be a good project.
Absolutely.
Very good. Well, I, I know where we're talking, so I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the local transportation funding agreement between Weber County and Pleasant View City for the Rule on White Boulevard project. And I would agree with Commissioner Harvey, this is something that is in the benefit economic development in this county for a number of years.
Yeah, in fact, it'll kind of open up that north end of that industrial area.
Well, yep.
Very good. And I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Very, very good. Brooke, keep going.
Hey.
You're doing good here.
Thanks. The third one is for the Pleasant View City Skyline Drive project. This project is a little unique and coincidentally, due to the grade, there is an extensive amount of excavation that needs to be done on the Skyline Drive project for them to go from 500 West and make the connection down to Highway 89. The excavation cost could be potentially reduced quite, quite a lot if they were to build, or they were to compile, I'm sorry, grading plans set for the contractors to come in and actually mine and haul the materials that are needed and use them for road construction projects. So they, they have applied for that 250,000 which was recommended for them to be able to put that grading plan set out to bid and see if the contractors could come in and reduce those excavation costs by mining that materials. So it's 250,000 in sales tax funds and it's also programmed for 2021.
Great. You know, this is interesting how they're going to try to do this and isn't it?
Yeah.
This is a unique way of looking at this and I'm interested to see how this works out.
The excavation costs, just calculated based off of your normal excavation estimates would be about $11 million and they think they could substantially reduce that number.
Excited, isn't it? Great. All right.
So move that we approve the local transportation funding between Weber County and Pleasant View City for Skyline Drive.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, Brooke, last one.
Final one is for the Hooper City 5,500 West project. This project is proposing to widen .83 miles of roadway from 5,500 West, on 5,500 West from 4,200 South to 3,550 South. The agreement is for 344,460 in corridor preservation funds and 3,331,449 in sales tax funds. Those are also programmed for the year 2021. Hooper City is contributing $200,000 in local matching funds toward this project.
Question? John?
Motion to approve the transportation funding agreement between Weber County and Hooper City for, for the 5,500 West project.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Before I call that, I just want you to know, it's interesting, some of these little communities out west are starting to grow.
They are.
You're seeing the Hooper, the pressures that they're starting to have on some of these, so it's interesting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
It's approved. Thanks, Brooke. We appreciate you presenting this today. Next up is a request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and WCEC Engineers for the design of North Ogden Divide Rehab. Brayden Felix, tell us about this, Brayden.
Last fall, we got our assessment back from Talisman Civil Consultants from a contract we had with them last year to have an assessment on the North Ogden Divide. And we did that to have them tell us what improvements needed to happen on that road to improve its safety. Now that we have the assessment and we know what needs to get done, we need to get the improvements designed and so we have gone through the procurement process to get WCEC to do that design for us. The contract is for 79,000 and they have scheduled to be finished by late June.
Very good. So in my conversations with these guys, being done in late June, that means some of it'll be able to be done this year and others will have to be done next year. It's just the way it is, you know? There's nothing you can do about this.
This is a great, may I? It's a great step in making that particular stretch of road safer for the people who travel over it. And Commissioner Jenkins, I compliment you for your work on this, so to speak, doing everything you can to get the log out of the river, so to speak. It's you're making it.
Thank you. Very good. How about a motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the contract between Weber County and WCEC Engineers for the design of the North Ogden Divide Rehab. And this, just mentioned, this is a needed project for that artery into Ogden Valley into North Ogden that's, hopefully will pay dividends in the future.
Very good. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brayden, we appreciate that. Next up is a request for approval buying between Weber County and Fort Buena Ventura Mountain Men for the Easter Rendezvous. Mr. Ferrariol.
Gentlemen, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Sorry for the late showing of this. We assumed this was a multi-year, which we were wrong, so we brought it. Two years ago, we went to bid for a new partner in the rendezvous and I think you that have been there have seen the turnaround is phenomenal. The kids' activities, the actual scheduling for events, the crowd participation has peaked at about over 4,000 for the days of the rendezvous, so. Great partnership. You will in a couple of weeks see a second contract with these guys that allows them to do upgrades at our facility. You guys are touring Friday at 11 o'clock. You'll notice some of the historic preservation they've done with us this year in the fort itself, in the cabin, the new chimney. It's all around a great partnership and a phenomenal event, so.
When is the rendezvous this year, Mr. Ferrariol?
School days start Thursday this week. That was new to them. They have one day that they open up all for schools and we have thousands of kids that come down and it goes through the Easter egg hunt on Sunday.
So it usually happens on Easter weekend?
Easter weekend. And this beautiful weather we're having. But we were six inches from flooding last night, we're down two inches right now and we're moving down, so we're doing all right. We'll make it, so.
Hold on. I think by the time you get back there, you'll be back up.
Yeah, I just got a text saying they were down 500 CSMs or CFS, so. I was in the chair this morning getting oral surgery and Lance is texting me, so we're good. Sorry if I'm a little groggy, that it wears off, that hurts. Wow.
Yeah. Well, okay, I apologize, I won't be there this, I'm going out of town tomorrow, so I won't be there.
We'll take pictures.
Thank you.
You know you get a name when you go. You get an official mountain man name.
Oh, mountain man name. That's right, I'd heard that.
So you not being there, we will be sure to get you a good one.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I, can, may I make, I'd like to sign.
Something like bear claw or tough.
If you're not there, I'm not sure we'll let these two gentlemen choose.
It might be.
Soft like a rabbit tail.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and Fort Buena Ventura Mountain Men for the Easter Rendezvous.
I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We appreciate it. All right, last item up here is a request for a first reading of an ordinance for the Board of County Commissioners of Weber County governing the use of bilateral contracts. Devon?
What are you laughing at? Morning again Commissioners. As you know, this year, we've implemented a right-of-way program in my department. It's been going very well and we've had the need to create a couple of form documents. And in the process of creating those form documents, we discovered that there was quite a few documents that we were using in the surveyor's office that probably hadn't properly been vetted or included into this code, section of code. So as we've discussed before, we've just got a few changes in this code that would allow the surveyor's office to produce and use these, or not produce, in conjunction with the attorney's office, we'd produce these forms, but then we would be able to use them effectively and efficiently in our office without bringing all of them to commission every time.
Very good. Questions?
Got no concerns about that. Gage?
Remind me again Devon, we, I know that you talked to me about the two different forms, so is this going to be in the form of a quick claim, quick claim deed? Maybe that's a question for counsel. And how does that change from our current form?
Yeah, it is. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead with this, Chris. Currently, any kind of real estate transaction is required to be a bilateral contract unless it's listed as an exception here. And so we do, from time to time, we acquire quick claim deeds for right-of-way and we acquire easements to get across private property to maintain monuments, which is typically on privately owned streets. So those are the, the primarily the documents that we're adding to this portion.
Okay, so just adding additional documents?
Yeah, additional documents that wouldn't be required to be a bilateral contract. The property owners could just quick claim them to us without us having to enter into a contract with them.
Yeah, that makes sense. We're getting the other side of the, of the parties involved, we make sure we have a solid agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense. I like it.
Very good. Make a motion.
I would move to approve the ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners governing this use of bilateral agreements, or excuse me, bilateral contracts for the surveyors. Second?
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I didn't hear that. Very good. So Devon, while you're there.
Yeah.
Tell me about, we're kind of tasked you guys to start looking at the right-of-ways of roads.
Yes.
Especially in West Weber County. Now, have you started that process?
Well, you, as you know, there's a group that's been putting together a recommendation list of roads. Right now, we've been concentrating on the, the sections of roads that are going to be needing this, these particular documents for building permits and, and business licenses. But as soon as that list gets finalized, we intend on adding that to our priorities and starting to attack those one at a time, so.
Gee, I'm not sure how much effort to put into that now that it's going to look like they're going to be a city.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Well, until otherwise assigned from, from you guys or from the citizens out there, we'll just continue to move forward and do what we can, so.
All right. Good. Thanks Devon. We appreciate your times and effort today.
Thank you.
You bet. Well, Commissioners, comments? Either of you care to say anything today?
I, Gage?
I'll be, yeah, let me just say a couple of things that, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your county, state of the county address. I think that we have a clear consensus. There's a number of things that, that we've dealt with and we will be dealing with over the next number of months and years. All positive, by the way, in my opinion, for, for Weber County. And as you well know, I kind of come from a team concept as an old coach and I appreciate and believe that you, we can always accomplish more working together and as a team than we can as individuals. And I can say without a doubt that in my short experience here, in the commission, we're working as a team, which is in a benefit, at the end of the day, is in a benefit all our citizens, makes our working environment and our culture at the county for all our employees an upgrade from where we've been and I think where we're headed. So again, I appreciate your leadership on this, very strong message that where we're headed for the citizens of this county.
Amen. That's where I was headed. And there won't be, there won't be a huge lot of people that'll hear this here but, or later, but you know, I work with two guys who genuinely care. Off times if, and not a lot of people know, but a lot of times late at night, these guys are still here. Last night in particular, Scott shared something and he'll probably be a little embarrassed or mad at me that I say this, but I don't really care. He's been mad at me before and it really hasn't bothered me. But he stayed up most of the night. He just wanted to make sure this state of the county thing was good and on track and he was, he presented well and. Well, you did a wonderful job today, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And Gage, it's, I'm having one of the best experiences in my life, working. It's not, I'd rather do this than golf, I'd rather do this than fish, I'd rather do this than, I'd almost rather do this than eat, although that's, but I really, really enjoy working with you two very much. It's been great for me and just thank you. So Gage, your comments were spot on. Amen. Amen to that. That's what I had.
Well, the feelings are mutual. I love working with you guys. This is very enjoyable. Well, very good. With that, I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, so move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1690.65]